Good evening, I'm calling to order the Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, 6:00 PM, regular school board meeting to order. If everyone would rise for a moment of silence and the pledge in National Anthem. The colors this evening are presented by Cadet Master Sergeant Isabella Stanford, Cadet Staff Sergeant Aiden Defazio, Cadet Senior Airman Denise Gonzalez, Cadet Airman First Class Tyler Rettinger, and Lieutenant Colonel Baskerville is supervising. Please stand for presentation of the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Superintendent, do we have any proclamation resolutions or legislative updates today?
I have none to report, sir.
All right. In that case, we're going to move on to our spotlights this evening.
Could we back up and do roll call, sir?
Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
It's okay, we figured we were here.
Yes. Roll call.
President. Ramira Lewisian, present.
Janet McDonald.
Jill Wilbright.
Cheryl Messero.
Colleen Conklin, present.
Trevor Tucker is here.
Kathy Middlestat, and our Matanzas High School student representative was not able to join us this evening, so that completes the roll call. If we're good, we'll go on with the superintendent's spotlight for strategic plan. In Flagler Schools, we have a strategic plan that stands up six very important goals. Tonight, I want to shine a spotlight on our operational efficiencies. And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is being great stewards of the tax dollars that come to us. Most recently, we went through, unfortunately, a hurricane situation here where there's a tropical storm that impacted our community. Many community residents who are new to Flagler Schools may not realize that our schools close as a school and then are reverted into a shelter of last resort. And so, one of the things that we're very prideful on is how we provide that as possible comforting opportunity for residents who need us in those times. So, I'm just going to show you a quick clip here that just captures the shelter opportunities in times of needs throughout the year if we are faced with a condition like this. So, if you could play the video.
When we talk about the half penny surtax that has been collected for 20 years, many people think about technology. And while the rapid growth of classroom tech is a direct result of this investment, it's important to note that half penny does much more. When people in our community are forced to evacuate their homes in times of severe tropical weather, Flagler Schools opens our doors. Because of the half penny surtax, we can offer much more than an emergency shelter experience. We've been able to upgrade our HVAC and generator systems and offer an efficient and safe check-in and checkout process, all thanks to the half penny. When the storm clouds are moving in, Flagler Schools wants you to know that thanks to your continued support, you've got a safe place to stay.
So, one of the tasks this school charges the school district leaders with is making sure we're aligning our resources to the better servant of our students, and in this case, it was for our residents as well. So, thank you, Board. That's our spotlight for this evening.
Thank you. Our next spotlight this evening is presented by Dr. Holliday, Disability History and Awareness Weeks. Dr. Holliday, and whoever else you're bringing up.
I introduced Lauren to y'all the last time we were here, and I'm going to let her take the spotlight again on what we've got to share for you on disability history and awareness.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Middlestat, Chairman Tucker. So, like Dr. Holliday just introduced me, Lauren Marshall. I have a group of wonderful people here behind me, some teachers, some students, just some awesome human beings. So, like I said last month, October is Disability Employment Awareness Month. It's also Disability Awareness Month. So, this is a nationwide incentive to highlight career paths for people with disabilities. The Disability Awareness Month pays tribute to the accomplishments of men and women in disabilities whose work helps keep nation's economy strong by reaffirming their commitment to ensure equal opportunity to all citizens. So, several Flagler County classrooms have incorporated lessons about Disability Employment Awareness Month. The Trail Transition Program learned about famous people who have disabilities. Participants at Project Search learned about disabilities and what accommodations they need when it's time to get a job. Rimfire Elementary School students talked about their strengths related to disabilities. And a student from Wadsworth participated in Abacus B., which is the math competition for visually impaired students. He got first place. So, tonight, I want to share with you guys the goals of several of these students and other students that aren't here. So, this is kindergarten through transition programs in our county.
I want to make a big difference.
Space? And what are you going to do in space? See the moon?
What?
And what about the stars?
Stars!
Yeah! And what about the planets?
Yeah!
Yeah! I'm so excited! So, you're going to be an astronaut? Yeah! That's awesome, Harry. High five.
Yeah! Good job, buddy.
I want to share, share, and love and kindness with the world because I want to make the world happy.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Camia. I'm going to be a teacher.
Oh, that sounds amazing. What kind of teacher do you want to be?
I'm going to work at pre-K or like first grade.
Awesome.
Pre-K is more secure.
My name is Elijah. I want to be a police officer when I grow up.
My name is Katie. I'm in seventh grade. I want to work at Disney.
So, what's your name?
Velada.
And what would you like to be when you grow up?
A vet.
That is awesome. What's your name?
Ben.
Where do you want to work when you grow up?
Cowboys.
Hi, my name is Joanna, and when I graduate from FPC, I want to be a criminal defense lawyer.
Hey, my name is Silver. I plan on going to Daytona State to learn software engineering.
My name is Peter. I go to Matanzas High School, and when I graduate, I want to go to Western Running Academy in Wyoming.
To help kids by tutoring them.
My name is Joe. I want to work at Publix.
I am a cashier, and I am a military care. But I want, what I've done, I want to work at YOLO.
I am in Project Search, and I work as a dishwasher. When I am finished here, I will work as a dishwasher.
Hey, everyone, it's hard to top the kids, right? So, I'm Steve Ferrari. I'm the chairperson of the ESC Parent Advisory Council, and I have a child with a disability. And as a parent of a child with a disability, we just hope that they can contribute to our community in the best way possible. And I want to thank all of the educators and the staff and the community members here at Flagler Schools who are helping make that happen. Thanks.
All the big kids that do all the work, thank you so much. Well done. Well done. Very much, thank you.
Our last spotlight this evening is presented by Ms. Ferrer and Ms. Bozeman, and this is the Florida Council for Social Studies, Harry T. Moore Teaching for Civil Rights and Civil Liberties Award. Then we'll get to explain more.
To bring this down a notch. Good evening, Chairman Tucker, Board members, and Superintendent Middlestat. The Harry T. Moore Teaching for Civil Rights and Civil Liberties Award, sponsored by Social Studies School Service, aims to recognize and celebrate a Florida teacher who encourages an appreciation and respect for civil rights and civil liberties as demonstrated by the example set by Harry T. Moore. He was an activist who engaged in registering citizens to vote and also a martyr of the civil rights movement. This award is presented to someone who captivates the teaching spirit of Harry T. Moore and is intended to honor an individual who is striving to continue the work of both Harry T. Moore and his wife Harriet by advancing civil rights and civil liberties. Mr. Tony Zaksowicz has been an educator in Flagler Schools for 16 years. He has spent countless hours in his classroom impacting the lives of students, stretching their thinking, and empowering them to become active citizens who will positively impact the world. A colleague writes, "He gives a voice and makes room for all underrepresented groups in our collective history. He allows students to explore the expansion of civil rights and civil liberties over time while encouraging students to explore parts of history that speak to them." Former Assistant Principal of Matanzas High School Mandy Kravarodis noted, "Tony infuses oral history, local guest speakers, and so much more. He takes advantage of the micro-local history in our surroundings with field trips to places like Lincolnville and historic civil rights sites in St. Augustine. He has also partnered with our local African-American Cultural Society to have Matanzas students contribute to their latest Smithsonian exhibit Waterways, which was on display through September 2022. On behalf of Flagler Schools, it is my honor to recognize and celebrate this year's award recipient of the Harry T. Moore Teaching for Civil Liberties and Civil Rights Award from Matanzas High School, Mr. Tony Zaksowicz."
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot, but you're the award winner. Congratulations. Really great.
That concludes our spotlights this evening. If you were here for spotlights, feel free to sneak out right now. Take a brief pause.
Congratulations.
Okay, Board members, we have minutes. We have minutes from September 6th, 3:00 PM Agenda Workshop. September 6th, 5:15, Special Public Meeting. September 9th, the special meeting that was canceled. September 12th, the special meeting for the Annual Financial Report. The September 20th, 1:00 PM Information Workshop, and the September 20th, 6:00 PM Regular School Board Meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes? If not, all those minutes will stand as presented. Superintendent, are there any additions, changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Board members, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none? All right. Now, we're going to move on to public comment. Now's the opportunity for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Does anyone in the public want to comment? Seeing none at this time? We will move on to consent items, Board members.
Move approval of consent items?
Second.
Okay, Board members, we have consent items 701 through 710, 901 through 906, 1001, 1002, and 1101 and 13.01. If there's no any questions or discussion on any of those items? In that case, I have a motion by Ms. Conklin and a second by Ms. Messero. All in favor of consent items, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Our first action item this evening is our student progression plan. Mr. Reeves, Mr. Stefanski, I believe you're presenting this.
Good evening, Chairman Tucker, Board members, and Superintendent Middlestat. Pursuant to Statute 1008.25, the school board is required to establish a comprehensive plan of student progression that outlines how students will progress from one grade to the next. This plan is updated annually and is to align with the current statutory requirements that have been passed in the prior year. As a reminder to the public and the Board, a couple weeks ago, we workshopped this current plan as it stands to go over the changes that were made, most of which are largely structural, moving things around, consolidating, removing redundant verbiage. We also removed references of FSA and replaced them with FAST, those kinds of upkeeps when compared to the plan from last year. So, with that, we ask the Board's approval on the current student progression plan.
Move approval.
Are there any discussion or comments?
Every year, it gets better and better.
Longer and longer.
If there's no other discussion, we have a motion by Ms. Conklin and a second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. The student progression plan passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, 17.01. Mr. Freeman, you're presenting the Currency Interlocal Agreement. I think we're the last public agency to approve this.
Yes, sir.
Wonderful.
Good evening, Board. Chair Tucker, Superintendent Middlestat. Attached you will find a final executed copy of the Interlocal Agreement for Public School Facility Planning, which we refer to as our ILA. This document was presented at the 8th September Oversight Committee meeting and is recommended for approval by the respective councils. And as you mentioned, Chair Tucker, it has been approved by City of Palm Coast, Flagler Beach, Flagler County, and the City of Bonnell.
Move approval. Second.
I would like to just mention that I'm the one taking it across the finish line, but there were a lot of people besides me that were getting this done. Ms. Bott, Ms. Gavin, Mr. Chris Wilson, and just a slew of other people, so.
Are there any discussions or questions?
I just want to speak huge gratitude because it wasn't easy for anyone, and it kept coming back, and there were influences that were working against an incredible agreement. But you persevered, and we had school board members who maintained the bottom line that this is a valuable resource to the county. This is the face of the county, and we all have to work together and speak truth to the arrangement and the collaboration that's needed. And you were all, the team was all very focused and not deterred by any of the conflict that was arising from outside. So, I appreciate it. My hope is just that we get to work with the county the next time Impact Fee Study comes up, so we work in concert, continue to work in concert, because it felt really good to come to that agreement and have everybody be knowing that we were doing the best thing for our entire community. So, thank you, and thanks for the perseverance on everybody's part. And I sure hope Patty Bott gets better soon.
I was simply just going to say, I would like to associate myself with everything that Ms. McDonald just said. So, thank you. Thank you for your team, and I hope Patty's watching. Thank you, Patty and Christie, and everybody else that worked on it, and Chairman Tucker. Good job on breaking that, kind of that pushing us where we needed to go, so it was good stuff.
And the reminders for everybody about the details, Ms. Conklin. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you to all those governmental entities that approved this. And with that, we have a motion by Ms. Wilbright, a second by Ms. Messero. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. That is wonderful.
So glad that's over.
That was a six-month process.
Yes, it was.
Mr. Freeman, next, we have the contract between the Flagler Educational Support Personnel Association, also known as FESPA, and the school district. You're presenting, please.
Yes, Chair Tucker. Board attached you will find the FESPA contract, the Flagler Educational Support Personnel Association, Professional Association. And I have that changed on this slide here. So, the document that is attached to Board Docs has that new change where it says professional, and I'm sorry, I did not change that for this meeting. This contract was ratified by FESPA on the 22nd of September. Pending your questions, I present the 2022-2025 FESPA contract for your approval.
Move for approval.
Are there any questions, discussion?
Just a statement that there's a couple things in here. It's a three-year contract, which is wonderful. But, you know, it's nice to see that the insurance rebate has been clearly spelled out, so there shouldn't be any issues of that in the future. And the salary gaps, having the committee kind of close those gaps and work on that, that's critical so we can get the salary matrix where it needs to be. So, well done, and we'll look forward to the completion of those, that item in particular.
We are starting on our salary committee, I believe, on the 7th or 8th of November. We have a, is it the 10th? Okay. We have our first meeting with FESPA to start that process and to come back in April.
Good. That's great.
Any other questions? We have a motion by Ms. Messero, a second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman. Next is we have some job description changes for bus drivers and transportation aid. Mr. Roulette?
Not a record, but I mean...
Evening, Chairman Tucker, Board members, Superintendent Middlestat. As we kind of discussed earlier in the workshop, Mr. Freeman and Dr. Rawls and myself have worked on some modifications to the bus driver and bus aid job descriptions. As you know, we are in times of great need as far as employment across both the public and private sectors. Flagler Schools is not exempt from that. One of the ways that we try to address issues is to problem solve as we, you know, these issues come to light. One of the issues that has come to light is we have a lot of second-career folks and immigrants that are having a hard time producing their graduation proof, their documentation. As, you know, can be very made, made clear apparent from the fact that over the past month, we've had eight folks that either couldn't produce it because their high schools and their records don't exist.
Right.
Because they're second-career folks, or they've come to us from other countries with, you know, past work history here in the United States and, you know, all the proper documentation as far as work, but they cannot produce their high school graduation from, you know, anyplace, you pick a place in the world, we have them from everywhere. So, as a result, what we're looking to do is we've done some research on a basic skills test that basically measures core curriculum, and it's an entry-level test so that the folks that we're hiring, the metrics show that based on those assessments, they would be successful in entry-level positions in core curriculum, math, reading, science, as far as their skills to do the jobs. And so, that's our hope with the change in the job description. And that's the first step in a two-step process. Next would be aligning the procedures for the basic skills test to go ahead and make possible those folks to be employable should they pass the test.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, Board, we have any discussion, comments?
I just, go ahead, sorry.
I just wanted to say that I'm so delighted to see this small change, which can have a great effect on obtaining the employer, employment that we need, especially at this time. Many of these drivers have been, they're CDLs, they've been driving for a very long time, and this one little hiccup is keeping them from being employed here. And I think this is going to solve that problem, and I'm certain that transportation will be delighted to have this change. And thank you and your team for thinking outside the box and getting this, seeing where the problem was and fixing it. So, it's not that we're putting people on the road that aren't prepared, it's just that they can't find the document. And I just want to make sure the community understands that. Thank you.
I was just going to say, basically...
I was just going to say basically the same thing. I appreciate it. At first, I wasn't so keen on this kind of a change, being that we are an educational organization, but I didn't realize the difficulty of obtaining a document like that. And then I started thinking, you know, anybody to obtain that, you know, who's in a second career, that would be a challenge. So kudos to you and your team for really tackling the problem and coming up with a solution. So thank you for that.
Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Ms. Conklin and a second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Roulette.
Great.
All right, board members, that was all the items this evening. Do we have any old business, new business? This is, I do have like a little bit of new business. For the next Agenda Workshop, if it's okay with everyone, I would like to invite all the folks who would be sitting on the board to come up and be part of our Agenda Workshop. That way, they, you know, they're going to be voting on these things two weeks later. You know, they can't bring up new business or old business because of the fact that they're not technically a board member, but they can at least have a discussion and if they can be here. So if you guys are okay with that, I would invite, you know, Chrissy Chong, Sally Hunt, Will Furry, and Ms. Vandabunty, all those folks to come, if they are available, to sit up there and be able to have that experience. Also, it's an Agenda Workshop where we're going to be, you know, we go through what that next meeting is going to be like. If that's okay with everybody, then I will probably have the superintendent reach out to them and see if they can come.
I think it's a great idea.
I like it. Smart.
Good. Wonderful. Well, with that, if there's no other new business or old business, we will move on to public comments. Is there any public comments at this time? Seeing none, would you like to start off with a closing comments?
Hello? Okay, yes. So I would just like to recognize all of the activities and sports at FPC, specifically with our cross-country team, girls and boys who won the, who were district champs, or not district, five-star champs, and our football team who was district champs along with our DECA team that recently went to Nationals competition. Additionally, I would like to talk about the Teen Town Hall that we are going to have on October 20th. I really encourage all students to attend to help keep themselves informed and make their voices heard.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Sure. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate for the folks who didn't watch the workshop, we've had some incidents with cell phone use during free time, lunches, and passing in halls. I would really appreciate it if parents would really talk about the ethic and the personal responsibility of cell phone use and inappropriate and criminal exposure through this vehicle that people are not understanding. We had someone who actually withdrew from Flagler Schools because they had been exposed to something from a friend at a lunchroom table. It is not innocuous, and if kids don't know the limits, we really need to follow through with that. And it's, it is kind of in line with the wonderful presentation we had with, at Matanzas today, thanks to Principal out there. The Facts, Your Future was a presentation done by DJJ. Commander Neat was there, and I know that you're part of the team. So all of the people in our district are really empowering our kids with information and expectations for investing in themselves for the best future that they can create on their own. The Facts, Your Future, it's all about drugs and alcohol and what it does to you and how it limits you. So I know you'll hear more about that, but it's certainly not anything that you can talk too little about, because kids go a little bit beyond where they need to go, sometimes without their awareness, just to get along. So we had a wonderful presentation by a brilliant man who was caught up in that cycle, and it was very impactful. I think the day was very beneficial for all the kids that got to see it, and I hope, thanks to Ms. Masaro, we're going to have it for FPC and the rest of the district at some point. But it's never too early. Don't wait for a presentation, find out more about it, and find out what really happens to you and your limitation, your child's limitations with drugs and alcohol. And the other thing is, I just wanted to make everyone aware, we've been captive for the last couple of years on a lot of misinformation from the mainstream media, and I wanted you to know that a lot of people have not read this book, nor will take the time to read it, The Real Anthony Fauci. And there is a video that's free right now on the internet that you can, that Nikki Willis made, and it's worth your time to find out what has been behind a lot of the information, misleading information, and putting people in the wrong, in harm's way. So I wanted people to know it's free on the internet, and it's for your best health and wellness. And my issue has always been the best for our community, so I'm sharing that today. And I wish everyone well for the rest of the month. It's going to be a good Halloween time, so be careful about the goodies that your kids collect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Ms. Wilbright?
Happy fall. Have a great night. It's supposed to be a little bit cooler this week. Enjoy it. It's my favorite time of year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilbright. Ms. Masaro?
A couple things. First of all, I want to thank a lot of our staff and who were involved in covering our shelters through the hurricane. They give up leaving, working with their families, and they leave their families to come to help residents here. Some of them don't even live in Flagler County. And I hope that the majority of people that suffered extensive damage are getting the assistance that they need. The first time I came down here, we had a hurricane, three in a row, and I boxed up my house like a cave. And since then, I've never put anything on my windows, because, you know, it's just, I think we kind of get used to it. And we've had so many new people move in here. I'm sure there was a lot of plywood being sold at Home Depot and everywhere else, because, and generators being bought and things like that. Those of us that have lived here sometime, we realize it's not necessary, but you don't, you always want to make sure you take precautions, and that's a good thing. But we do have a lot of staff that we need to thank, and I really do appreciate that work. Election Day is coming up. We have still a seat available here. All I'm asking, you've got Tuesday, November 8th, is Election Day. Early voting is 10/24 through 11/5. And actually, mail-in votes are out there now. They're starting to come back. So it's important, you just look at the candidates. We're electing quite a few things here, not just school board members. Check them out. Make sure you make the right choice that suits your needs. Right? That's important. Halfpenny sales tax. People, I don't know if you've heard, and you're going to hear it again from me, but every year we get a chunk of money for making our schools safe. And we had $187,000 last year, and this year we have $87,000. We have to make up that difference. That's a 72% cut by the government. And it just doesn't happen in safety. Constantly, the government's asking us to do more and more and taking more money away. You know, it's nice when they give us some to cover what they want us to do, but that doesn't happen very often. So please, please, I'll get my knees if I have to. But we need that money, because we need you to approve the halfpenny sales tax. It's very, very important to the continuation of this school district and how well we did during COVID, because we did have it. We were ahead, and our kids did, believe it or not, better than both schools to our north and our south, because we had computers. And it does help with technology. Finally, we had a little conversation about the virtual Teen Town Halls. Started that two years ago, and our school liaisons are responsible for conducting it, and it comes out of our association with, also Focus on Flagler Youth Coalition. And our two ladies are ready to roll. It's this Thursday night. It's at 7:30 PM, and it's from your own home on your computer with your student, and it's just for students. There are a few adults on there, myself included, but we don't say much. We introduce ourselves, and we turn off our cameras, because it's their show. We can't work with kids if we don't know what's going on in their heads. We have to communicate with them. It's pivotal. And this topic will kind of help with what Ms. McDonald was just talking about, but it's know the law, and they'll talk about phone use and sexting and things like that. But it's also going to cover gun violence. And Commander Neat will be our professional expert that'll be on that call. And we've lost, we've lost students because of gun violence, and it needs to stop. We need to get a hold of it. So hopefully, we can, you know, we work from the top and the down and the bottom up with our youth, and we can get a hold of this whole gun violence situation. So that is this Thursday, and if you want your student to get involved, they can send me an email, and I'll get them hooked up to get the link, or you can send emails to either of our young ladies on the school board, and they will get you hooked up, so you get a link to participate. That's it. Thank you for a good meeting. Yes, I have the emails here. Actually, what it is, it's their school emails. For Roymara, it's R-O-Y-M-A-R-A-L-O-U-2148@flaglercps.org. And for Bella, it is Isabella, I-S-A-B-E-L-L-A-0294@flaglercps.org. Or myself, which is my last name and first initial, M-A-S-S-A-R-O-C@flaglerschools.com. If you go to the website, you will also see a copy, you can find a copy of this flyer with the information listed. Thank you.
Yep. District website.
Ms. Conklin?
Thank you. I just wanted a big shout out and thank you to the staff for manning the hurricane shelters. That's really, a lot of people don't realize how nerve-wracking that can be sometimes, because you have to leave your own family. And so that's, it just immediately seems unfair, but it's a sacrifice that our team makes all the time, always afraid of getting stuck on this side of the bridge before the winds come. But I really do appreciate, and I'm very grateful for the team, Kathy, that you have that selflessly do that every single time. During this hurricane, it was a little special, it was a little different, because we had so many Flagler County graduates who were linemen, who are now working and getting us back up and running, if you will. And I'm not talking like one or two, there's like a whole crew. And so, and they're doing it. They're all over the place, but it was nice to see them back here and to see their posts from their families and from them, and just having a great sense of pride in what they were doing, just very proud of them, just wanted to mention that. And again, you know, it is our last final public meeting prior to the, well, we will, we'll have one more with the workshop. But just again, a plug for the halfpenny sales tax. And a great big thank you to the Ed Foundation and the PAC for all of the support and the help, and for everybody else who has supported and kind of shared the benefits. Jason, some of the pieces that have been put together have been really helpful. It's just all around great, good stuff. And I know we'll take a moment during the workshop, and that will be the final meeting of the three of you, but I wanted to just take a moment to just personally tell you, Janet, I have worked and enjoyed working with you over the years. I'll miss our conversations about child development and neuroscience and the impact of movement on children and the value that that has on a developing brain. I'll miss, you know, the focus on cell phones and the use of cell phones and appropriate use of technology in the classroom. And I wish you well, and I have enjoyed those conversations tremendously. And also, working to make sure that we grow in a very responsible way here in Flagler County. So I appreciate your advocacy in all of those areas. Thank you very much. Trevor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna really miss you, and I know you're really gonna miss me, Trev. But I just want to say, you know, we tease you a lot, and we joke with you a lot. And we know that if it costs an additional dime, that you're going to question it. But we all appreciate that about you. And you've always watched the bottom line, no matter what it was. And appreciate you bringing that to everybody's attention. And I want to thank you for your leadership over the years. You've guided us through some challenging times, and you've done it with grace. You've done it with a great sense of pulling everybody together. And so we're going to miss you. Appreciate all that you've done for the school district, your involvement and the impact that you've made with our students and our teachers.
Dr. Conklin, excuse me, just one more thing. Trevor's responsible for our refined meeting schedule. So one of the things-
This is very true.
And it is the envy of the county.
It is. It is. As a matter of fact, I think he could be hired as a consultant, moving forward on how to condense those other public meetings. But, see, we love to tease. And Jill, I will say, while we've had our challenges, I want you to know, I really truly do have always appreciated you bringing the teacher's perspective to the dais and sharing that perspective and keeping that in the forefront of many of those conversations. And I do appreciate that and wish you well. But I just want you to know, stay in touch, stay around.
Ms. Middlestat?
Thank you, Chair. So just briefly, we opened the meeting this evening celebrating our young people and all the opportunities we afford them and the accomplishments that they do. So my launch to everyone this evening is, we have opportunities in front of us, 135 more school days to elevate excellence team. We keep on moving it forward. So thank you for the honor to serve.
With that, thank you all. Have a good evening. We can get out of here at 6:47, under an hour. What more can we ask for? With that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night and see everyone later.